Hello, good morning, good afternoon, good evening to everyone. Welcome to this special session at the International Population Conference. My name is Yorami Palashan, I'm moderating this panel from here, the Republic of Moldova. But the topic that will be discussed today is not related to one single country because it affected everyone. First of all, it's about COVID and fertility and how these two phenomena like COVID pandemic affected the fertility trends in Europe, in Latin America, in Asia or in Africa. We have great panelists today, so very much looking forward to see their presentations and having the key findings that will be presented. I encourage you to raise questions in the chat and Q and A and to share your comments or your views on the presentations that will be made. As you know, the COVID pandemic has created a global public health pressure and affected everyone, including women and men, including the childbearing responsibilities and also the fertility intentions and aspirations. While countries across the world cope with a second, third or fourth wave of infections, a growing question is how the pandemic is already affecting fertility and how it will evolve in the longer term. In addition to birth data, the session will review and discuss parallel dynamics on marriage and union formation, reported fertility preferences, as well as changing access to contraceptives and sexual and productive health services from a growing number of countries. As I mentioned, we'll have all regions in this panel discussing their findings on how the fertility was affected by the COVID pandemic. The session will also discuss the resilience of civil registration systems during a pandemic and continuing operations. Speakers will include leading demographers, experts from governments, social scientists and policymakers. And the first one that we will discuss, the situation, will be from Latin America. So Walter Mendoza will be the one that will be speaking about the impact of COVID on the fertility intentions. So Walter, you have the floor and 10 minutes are all yours, please.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me? It's... Uh... Do you hear me right? Please?
Yes.
Okay. And you see my presentation in the screen? The presentation?
Not yet.
Uh... What is going on with the presentation?
You need to share your screen.
Hmm... Okay, I... You see it now?
Yes, you can do it full screen.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, my dear friends. And I am going to present a general insight of the COVID-19 impact on birth. This is a general overview of the impacts in the... in countries.
Just to note that we are not seeing your full screen. We're seeing the slides but not full screen. We're seeing the second slide on introduction. So if you can make your full screen.
You see?
You need... You need to click the presentation mode in the bottom right-hand corner. There's a little stand next to the zoom. Down at the bottom right-hand corner, you'll see it next to a little bookmark.
I am sharing the...
You need to put it in presentation mode, which is...
I...
Yes.
You see it now?
We see it, but please push "presentation mode", which is on the... on your right.
Yes. Down. I have just clicked that.
No, you haven't.
It is not working, I don't know why. Um... Uh, but now you see the presentation but not in the presentation mode, right?
Yes, we see the presentation but it's not full screen.
Okay, I don't know. I don't know exactly why I can't. I am changing this slideshow.
That's slideshow, yes, push that one.
I have now. Do you see?
Well, if it's not working, just go as it is, yeah. The floor.
I will go just this way, right?
Yes.
Uh, well, I will present this general overview and then the final part of my intervention, I will present in further detail the experience of Peru, the country I am working in the... in the Peru Country Office of UNFPA. Well, since the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, it had raised the question about how the pandemic might affect fertility trends. There were some... At the beginning of the pandemic, some scholars said there would be a baby bust because of the economical and social disruption of the pandemic. People may postpone or give up childbirth. Others said there would be a baby boom because of the people may not be able to access to family planning, to offer other risks. And so UNFPA headquarters, in collaboration with Country Office and National Economic Office, collected some data from some countries in the world, from major regions, as stated at the beginning of this session. It started from 2019 to the most current available data until the month of November. The data collected until last month from 15 countries from Eastern Europe, Western Central Africa and Asia-Pacific and Latin America, a total of 15 countries. And additional findings: overall, most countries don't show dramatic changes in birth trends. However, it may be too early to tell, so more longer time is required. No dramatic change, but brief fluctuation in 2020 and 2021 was seen in the first quarter of this year, 2021, but then it returned to normal trend as Peru, Ukraine, Thailand and Bhutan. And other group of countries, no changes and kept the normal trend, but showed some minor fluctuations, as Brazil, Cuba, Georgia, Mongolia, Benin, Colombia, Iran. And however, some countries like Bolivia, Moldova and Kosovo showed some big changes or increase in birth numbers and birth trends. These are the figures of this country with, like Thailand, with some seasonal changes, alas, in Peru, Thailand, Ukraine and Bhutan. And the other group of countries, no change and kept the usual trends. Uh, here we have what the administrative records have shown. Despite the... You have at the right in the black line the trends of the infections. Uh, some other countries, as I said, had some notable shift, Bolivia, Moldova and Kosovo. In these cases, some countries like Bolivia, as an example here, at the bottom on the left, there was a remarkable decline in the year 2020 by the mid-year. And also in Moldova and Yugoslavia. And well, this was the... the typology, the typology of countries based on the administrative records. I will now go in further depth to the case of Peru as a study case. First, some background of the country. There were declining trends in the number of unborn since the late eighties in Peru. By 1988, it was recorded according to latest population projection, about 680,000 unborn. But by this year, we have about 150 less than that peak in the late eighties. There was also a declining total fertility rate. It was 5 in 1980, 2.9 in the year 2000 and 2.2 in 2020, according to latest population projection. However, last year, in the demographic annual survey, which in Peru is annually updated, it showed a reported 1.9. There was also a decline in maternal mortality, declining in the last three years of adolescents' pregnancies. And what is a novelty in the country is the... about 1.3 million migrants, most of them youth and young adults. Also, we have information about the number of the estimates of abortion miscarriage and stillbirth from the demographic annual survey. One out of seven... One out of seven pregnancy finish by... in abortion miscarriage of stillbirths as of 2020. Uh, important about the pandemic in Peru. Peru had the highest global death toll in two waves. In the first wave, about 100,000 deaths. And the second wave this year, the first semester this year, uh, was about 120,000 deaths. Monetary poverty from year 2019 to 2020 increased by 10% from 2023. Maternal death in the first year increased by 45% and is this year, it's estimated to go up to 60%. The maternity births increased by about 5%. By this... By this point in year, about 60% of the countries or the population is being... has been vaccinated. And importantly, last year, sexual activity lasts for weeks, decreased by 50% because most of the year, about half of the year, the country was in lockdown. And current use of modern contraception among United Women in 20 was 55%, which is very low and very... it's been in that level about 20 years, when the original average is 70%. And now we have in further detail the administrative records and we have from the year, from 2018 to 2021. And what is remarkable here is that at the beginning, nine months after, in green here, nine months after increasing wave, when the first wave in 2020 was taking place, nine months after was a decline in the number of monthly records of births. The same as we are here in 20... in 20... in 2009, in green. We also have here, after the nine months, after the second wave, which started by January, March, January, February, March this year. What potential implications does this have for Peru? The declining trends after the pandemic. Some progress made in the country, the last pregnancy in adolescence will reverse. The denominator first we made, maternal mortality rate in the SDGs. The changes we may have to address to new demands because of the increased poverty. They need to adapt the services, the transformative result of UNFPA and maternal mortality. How will the countries respond to new needs and demands? And will abortion and miscarriage still be increased? So, as key message in case of Peru, the uncertainty we are living and the challenges of a variety of variables in post-pandemic. And then how sub-national trends will behave by conciles, departments, age group? Because we have good information as to assess, not only national trends I have just shown, but sub-national trends. Qualitative research is also required, not only DSS, demographic projections or administrative records. How to assure late-stage gains do not reverse? And how to strengthen administrative records? Thank you very much for your...
Thank you very much, Walter. Very interesting data at global level first of all and then specifically on Peru. And it was shocking to see some data on how this... how the COVID pandemic will affect some of the data, like maternal mortality and increase of 45% and then with 60%. That's shocking. And then also access to the contraception, which may, as you just mentioned, may reduce the chances of achieving the transformative results, achieving the sexual health control for all by 2030. Thank you very much. We will come back to you later in the session. And now we will still remain in Latin America with Everton Lima from University of Campinas.
We will stop sharing, right?
Yes, yes, you can stop sharing. Then we'll have Everton sharing the situation in Brazil. As I mentioned, we'll remain in the same region. Everton, you have the floor and 10 minutes are all yours.
Uh, thank you. Just share my screen. There we go. Oh, there's something wrong. It's going to present the... Oh.
Yeah, I also see you twice.
Yeah, probably they are sharing the video that I recorded, that's why.
Yeah, let's start with your presentation only.
Okay, thank you.
Here you are.
Okay, so good morning, good afternoon, good evening to everyone. I'm very happy to be here and present this work that I've been doing with some colleagues that listed here. So what I'm going to speak about it are about the changes in birth counts in major cities of Brazil during the COVID pandemic. First of all, I will present to you a little bit of the context of this study. So since March last year, Brazil is and was a country that has been heavily affected by this new disease. The number of dead records increased exponentially as the number of COVID effects also got out of control in the country. And first, there were many studies trying to explain this relationship or the influence of these new illnesses in the number of deaths and possible reduction in life expectancy. But in the context of Brazil, there are a few empirical attempts to comprehend the effects of pandemic on birth counts. So this is actually one of the first empirical tribes that... or exercises that we have in the country. So what is the objective of this study that we have? We tried to investigate it, whether the pandemic accepts some influence on birth counts. And we chose six populated seats of Brazil. So the analysis involves the cities of Belo Horizonte, Curitiba, Fortaleza, Salvador, São Paulo and Rio de Janeiro. Why we decided to pick up these cities? They are the only ones, at the time that we started this research, that provided data by the municipality departments of hope of each city. So this is why we chose these ones. But they give a good overview of the country. So here we have where the cities are located and the red dots indicate where the cities are in the country and how big they are also indicated the size of the population. So São Paulo is the biggest city. And then we have Rio and then we have Fortaleza, Salvador, Belo Horizonte and Curitiba, the smallest one. And also we have the major region where each city belongs. So like I said, we tried to pick up cities that we have available data and that covers parts of each region of the country. So like I said, data come from municipality departments. We use information of women aged 15 to 44 years old. There were some cases of monthly births among women above the age of 44, but we just decided to take it out due to noisy data and few counts. And also below the age of 15, we did the same procedure. So and then we compared monthly births from October, December 2020 and January, March 2020 with the number of newborns in similar months and in years before the pandemic. This is one exercise. The other empirical exercise that we did in this research, we applied a decomposition method to understand the effect of age, the age of the mother in the change of birth counts during the pandemic. So we assuming that if there was a changing in birth counts during the pandemic could be associated with certain age groups of mother age groups that are doing so. First, we give you a few results of preliminary before the pandemic. This table is a TFR for the cities, the six cities that we have from 2017 until 2019. Well, most of the cities there are below replacement level in the last... in 2019, the last year before the pandemic. Some are very low, like Belo Horizonte and Curitiba, for example, lowest or close to lowest low levels. Other ones, like Rio de Janeiro, they're a little bit higher, but all of them are passing through fertility transition process. And we also want to look at the shape of the fertility, just to give a background of what was happening before. And here, what I can say is that in almost all cities in the last year or close to 2019, the last year that we had before the pandemic, the fertility was shifting from young age groups to women above the age of 30. So Belo Horizonte is a case, Curitiba, Fortaleza, it's still young fertility between the age of 2024, but there was also an increase in the last year among the women above 30. São Paulo is the same picture, Salvador, Rio de Janeiro is also a little bit close to Fortaleza. And this is the last result for the preliminary analysis. And we have here the development of mean age of childbearing. So in almost all cities, the mean age of childbearing was increasing. There are some special cases, like the seats of Northeast, Salvador, for example, and Fortaleza, where the increase was the highest ones. Other cities, the development in terms of year quarters from 2017 to 2019, there are not so much increasing in the mean age of childbearing, like Curitiba, Rio de Janeiro, Belo Horizonte, a little bit. And now we jump into the results of the analysis that we did. So here we comparing changes and proportion of births, actually percentage of births, between the years and considering different year quarters. So what do we have so far? And I want you that you have a quick look, a specific look. The cities of Fortaleza, Salvador and São Paulo, we see that in the first three months of the year, from January to March, comparing 2020 to 2020, there was a huge decline in birth counts, especially in Fortaleza, Salvador and São Paulo. São Paulo was actually in a speed-up process. But in other cities, we didn't see the same picture and that's what was interesting in these results. Like Curitiba, there was actually the process of decline, currently one. Rio de Janeiro, we have... In the last quarter that we are looking at, the blue sky bar, there were actually a reverse process. They reduced the decline during the pandemic. And also, this is in Belo Horizonte, sorry, and Rio de Janeiro was also something quite similar. There was actually a huge decline before, between 2018, 2019, and then it reduces and then increases just a little bit between 2020, 2021. And then here we have the results of the decomposition method that we applied. I just want to focus on the black bars, which are the last period that we analyzed, 2021, comparing to 2020. And almost all... And here what we have is the effect of age, which age group contributes more to the decline of the variations in birth counts between 2020, 2021, from January to March. And what we see is that, looking at the black bars, almost in all cities, it's between the age of 30 to 34, the age group of 30 to 34, that we see the most contribution and changes in birth counts. So jumping to conclusions to finish. So in the seats of Northeast, Salvador and Fortaleza, the fertility rates are likely to decline even further, given the present decline in birth counts that I showed you. We may speculate that fertility will probably reach low levels of close to low rates in 2021 and maybe in the forthcoming years. However, in other cities like Rio de Janeiro, Belo Horizonte, the declining birth counts have slowed down or even inverted its course. The biggest city of São Paulo, you also see that the birth counts in 2021 have also speed up its decline process during the COVID crisis. Another important result is that women between the age of 30 to 34 years old are the ones that they are more responsible for these reproductive changes. And it's also important that in not in all places of the country, the COVID was associated with fast birth reductions. So another thing is because of the uncertainty scenario that pandemic brought us, we could speculate that some women are more likely to postpone their realization of give up altogether the fertility intentions, causing perhaps a temporary baby bust in some seats of Brazil. But at the same time and another hand, due to the lack of public access to modern contraceptive methods for loss of secondary groups, we may also presume that the inequality in fertility levels may be accentuating during the pandemic. So this was it. I thank you, Missy, and I'm waiting for the discussion.
Missy, gracias and thank you to you as well. Everton, very interesting data. We'll discuss data with Thomas and also all panelists on why, for example, women aged 32, 34 are the main one that actually affected the fertility intentions. So it could be actually that some of them are postponed their second child presently, they have already one, but we'll discuss this later. So this was a short overview on Latin America from Brazil and also Peru. So now we'll be moving to Asia to hear more, what is the situation in Bangladesh. We'll be discussing with Salam Khan, Joint Secretary for Planning at the Ministry of Medical Education and Feminine Welfare Division, People's Republic of Bangladesh. Salam Khan, please, you have the floor.
Thank you, session chair and other discussions. Good morning, good afternoon and good evening to all of you. Let me share my presentation. Can you see my presentation?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah. What I'm going to present is first of all the COVID-19 situation in Bangladesh that includes the vaccination data and also the COVID-19 effect on the contraceptives and other sexual, reproductive and maternal health. and other sexual reproductive and maternal health services. Now it shows some CRBS in the battle registration system in Bangladesh, source of birth registration data, and how EPA birth registration system in Bangladesh works. Then finally, the training birth registration data during COVID and pre-COVID. And final slide for conclusions. In Bangladesh, the first confirmed COVID-nineteen case was reported in March twenty. So there, I can see my slide here. So can I see, see the full ship, full slide here?
Yes, yes.
So, so as I say, the first, the first COVID-nineteen case confirmed was detected in twenty twenty-two March, and since then, we have observed three waves of COVID-nineteen pandemic, one in two thousand twenty, and the other was twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. In the first wave, in twenty twenty, it was in June, July, and in twenty twenty-one, it was in March, April, and the third wave was in June, July, August. And until today, there are one point five, one point six million confirmed cases was detected, and out of which twenty-eight thousand dead already. And we have planned, I mean, the government has planned to vaccinate eighty percent of all populations, and currently, almost near fifty percent of the populations are vaccinated for first dose, and the second dose is almost twenty-eight percent. And during the COVID-nineteen, we have also observed the lockdowns and the national holidays, and the normal mobility was restricted, and the infection rate during the waves was ten to twenty percent. As, as Mr. Chair has mentioned, that the COVID-nineteen has an impact on overall service delivery. That also happened in Bangladesh in terms of the family planning services. If we compared pre-COVID twenty nineteen and during COVID in twenty twenty, and also post-COVID twenty twenty-one, we have seen that a drastic change in terms of the acceptors of the contraceptives. That the, that the orange color curve that is in during twenty twenty, that the first wave we have observed, and the country was under lockdown, so, and also observed during holiday in that case. And because of the limited access to contraceptives, and the community distribution was also disrupted, supply chain was also hampered, and most importantly, the providers and also declines were really fair to provide services to accept services. Because of those reasons, it has a severe impact on the acceptance of the contraceptives. It had a similar impact on, on the maternal health, for example, ANC one. We have compared pre-COVID, during COVID, and after COVID for six months of each of the year, and we have seen that the ANC one was reduced thirty-four percent from the pre-COVID in twenty nineteen. And after COVID, even, we couldn't risk to the pre-COVID situation, it's still thirty-one percent reduction of the uptake. Similarly, ANC healthcare two, it is twenty-four percent reduction from the pre-COVID situations. And after COVID, this is still twenty percent reductions. Similarly, healthcare three, twenty-one percent reduction during COVID twenty twenty, COVID-nineteen, and twenty-two percent for twenty twenty-one. And ANC four has the same implications. I mean, the COVID-nineteen has a negative impact on the service delivery. We have a civil registration vital statistics system in Bangladesh. On a prime minister in twenty-ten has started to develop a portion, a population register, and then twenty thirteen, it was comprehensively assessed by the Escape and WSO. And the government has formed a CRBS coordination mechanism in twenty fourteen with the Honorable Cabinet Secretary as chair, and that is this very strong committee having, having nineteen secretaries of twenty-five members of different ministries and policy, for policy support. And in twenty, and twenty twenty, I can see the slide because I'm seeing all the pictures. I mean, those are participating. Can anybody help, help me about this? I mean, I, I can see the, the participants' pictures and not the full picture of the slide here.
We see the full slide.
The, the, the last one, because CRBS supported by strategies that I can see really. In Bangladesh, the birth registration certificate is now mandatory for every, every work to get from the government, or even whatever you need to get, any service from the government is mandatory now, especially for the children, as we have observed that the, since, as you know, the Bangladesh citizen, they are having NID when they are eighteen, and to vaccinate to need NID, but the government has planned to vaccinate for children, school students, but they don't have NID. So the government has made, you know, mandatory, okay, if you produce, if you can produce birth registration certificate, then you will be vaccinated. And in that case, not only for that reason, it is now mandatory for, for all services if somebody wants to get from the government.
Salam, just to mention that you have two more minutes.
Yeah, we have two, or two sources of data. One is demographic and health survey, then also the multiple indicative cluster survey. If you look at the data, it during twenty twenty, only four point five percent birth was recorded in, within forty-five days, and eighteen point five percent within one year. But if you compare twenty nineteen, it was more than that, meaning it has an impact on also birth registrations. And EPA program, you know, in Bangladesh is a very important, very comprehensive, very effective program in Bangladesh, and EPA batteries is done through our health assistants who works at the field level. We call them the outreach worker, they go to, go to home, they pay home visit and, and counts and register pregnant women, and also the new nurse, and then vaccinate. And these certificates later was inserted in the, in the DSIS two server, dataset server. So if, if you look at this data, it also shows that there was an impact on COVID-nineteen of birth registrations. So during twenty twenty-two, it has gone down because of the country was under lockdown. Same thing happened also to the daily facility delivery. It has severely affected. If you look at the lower part of this graph, it has gone down during the COVID-nineteen. It is in twenty twenty. So I'm jumping to the conclusions, meaning that the DSIS two is our data, MIS data is very strong, that shows that the COVID-nineteen has an impact on the services we have provided. And but the, the, we can really say that it has an impact on fertility, although the delivery has gone down, but maybe it is under reporting. Same thing also happened for birth registrations. Maybe during COVID, they couldn't report, but after COVID, they will back to the reporting system, and they will take their birth registrations. Then we can actually say whether it has an impact or not. That is all for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Salam Khan, it's very interesting to see the situation in Bangladesh and how it has affected the access to the contraceptives, also limited access to contraceptives, and what is the, the impact on the birth rate. We'll move now to, to DSC, Democratic Republic of Congo, and we have Jacques Dimina. Yeah, we have you.
Yeah, thank you.
Please.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm going to make a presentation on the impact of COVID on fertility in Sub-Saharan Africa, though I will focus, give more example in DRC, but the situation is more general. So the background, I will not make long time here because, spend time, because it's almost other people have mentioned it. COVID has been devastating the, the life of people, over five million of death. And but in terms of the relationship between COVID-nineteen and fertility, we can say that the literature is, has mixed funding. Some factor may, may go for increase in fertility, other may, may support decrease in fertility. If we look at example from influenza and fertility, and HIV, and also look at potential effects on, on the sperm, the biological aspect, and also the selectivity of COVID-nineteen, the profile of population affected. So here we are giving example of the selectivity of the population. We can see here the difference between DRC on the right side and South Africa, left side. So we see that the parameter is different, and the population also affected male and female is different. Another example in DRC is, the epidemic is mostly concentrated in, in urban area, mostly in Kinshasa, though it's expanding in other cities or villages, but it's really a urban problem. So given that, we should expect the difference of the effect of the pandemic on fertility. So what are our questions here? We would like to respond to few questions. The most important question is the potential impact of COVID on fertility. How could this influence fertility in Sub-Saharan Africa, and how could we measure that effect? So theoretically, we have four approaches. One is the biological perspective, that may come up with a reduction of sexuality activity, the negative effect on the possibility to conceive for women, early termination of pregnancy, and poor quality of male sperm and sex differential mortality, though we don't have evidence for that perspective. And then we have a selectivity approaches. We, it may have a selectivity in terms of mortality and morbidity, and also in terms of education, those variable has, have an effect on fertility and associated with fertility. The two last approaches are the one people are mostly using, the behavioral effect, fear of the future, the replacement effect, and also the availability and utilization of services. So here is a summary of those, those different approaches. Schematically, we have it, it's complex, as we, we, we mentioned, that will depend on the different aspect, and also the fertility change may be affected by different pathway that conduct to fertility change. So what are the variable indicator we are going to use to measure this? We have train in number of, of birth, number of birth. We should expect that if we have number of birth, we can compare before and after the pandemic, taking into account the lockdown period. The second one is based on approximate determinant of fertility. For this example, we are going to use a contraception use model, number of people, women, a new user of modern contraception. And then we have, we may have also other approaches, indicator like the change in the distribution of the population, but we did not have chance to, to, to test that hypothesis. So what are the, what are the impact of COVID-nineteen on fertility in Sub-Saharan Africa? We'll start with the, the utilization of services. So, so far, the existing data don't show real change in, in the way people are using contraceptive method. There are some slight change over the period of lockdown, around March and April, and after that, people start to resume to behave as before. Here we have example of DRC. We, we can see that there are no change here in DRC. And then we have example of Mozambique, we can find that there are small change over the period. Another example is from West Africa, Togo and Benin, Togo and Niger, we can find that this, some changes here of the March, and March and April, and after that, the utilization of services is resumed, has been resumed in those countries, Niger and Togo. So in term of, we have another data for Burkina Faso and Kenya, that show that the utilization of contraceptive method did not change significantly in, in during the COVID, before and after. They had no major changes for those two countries also. The need for contraceptive method between urban and rural variation, we can find also less change over the period for those different countries, Burkina Faso, Kenya, DRC, and Niger. Here we give example of stockout, that could be other indicator of low utilization of services in different countries. We can find that the frequency of, of stock, stock, stockout in DRC in terms of contraception or malaria treatment or other product did not have any major impact during the COVID. So here we have number of birth. Some study in DRC say that they found that number of birth increased in DRC, but when we look at it, we can find that the number of they were increasing over the period since two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-one. So we don't know whether it's improvement in birth reporting or is the COVID thing here. Yeah, we do the analysis by, by, by month. We can find that the line, the two thousand nineteen is below, following by two thousand twenty, and then two thousand twenty-one. So we cannot say the increase is almost due to COVID. We have DRC, and then we have Kinshasa, where the pandemic was declared mostly, because other region was, is, was really, the frequency, the prevalence was low. We go in Kinshasa, the pandemic and lockdown was focused in the Gombe Health Zone. Gombe is the, the business municipality, is also the downtown. We can find that there, the, the profile is different, the pattern is different. It seems like fertility is declining in Gombe, because we can find that twenty twenty-one is down compared to twenty twenty and twenty twenty-nine. When we compare to another health zone is out of Gombe, we found the pattern is also different there. We don't know whether it's data, there are data issue, or is it a reflection of the reality. So when we look at one of the Islam area, Maluku is a peri-urban area, we found the increase in fertility, and some research mentioned increase in adolescent fertility in this area, in Maluku. So but if we look at here, the increase So but if we look at here, the increase was started in 2020, not specifically with the COVID. Here we have the example. We can find that if we analyze by month, that this area we have increased. And this where people were saying that this was increase in a potential effect of COVID. So we are not convinced that this increase, increase of adolescent fertility in Maluku is due to COVID. We think that is an improvement on the data coverage. So here we are giving example from less affected COVID provinces in DRC, Mayindomen, Sanguru. We can find also that there are no major change that we can attribute to COVID. Similarly, North Kivu and Okatanga were the most affected COVID area apart for Kinshasa. We can find that we cannot attribute the number of birth to COVID because the number of they was increasing every, since 2000, between 2019, 2020 and 2021. So we look at also the intention of fertility. The intention of fertility in Kinshasa and Kanu in Nigeria, there are no major change that we can say that before COVID and after COVID, there are change, real change in that. So one challenge we have is the data. As we mentioned there, we are not sure whether the increase we have is because we do adjust to has been improvement or is a problem of COVID. So we are thinking that having a more comprehensive data system that include record all the event will allow to analyze the impact of COVID or other pandemic on fertility or other demographic events. So what could we say? The theory and factor associate are not mutually exclusive. This is why we may found those mixed funding. The impact may depend on countries, place of residence and individual characteristics. And also the three hypotheses are still there. We, we, depending on the country, depending on the context. So no significant change in term of the FP, Family Planning Service use. As we can see here, potential baby boom, particularly fertility, adolescent fertility, but we are not sure about the effect of COVID. Potential effect of data and also the taking into account the local reality may improve the understanding those problem. So challenge, we have a COVID-19 has affected data collection mechanism. Then we need some national advanced analysis to understand the pandemic, the effect of the pandemic on the, on the demographic behavior. So this, I think this what I can say for this study.
Thank you very much, Jacques Leminah. It was very interesting to see the situation in DRC, especially that there were no changes in the Family Planning Service. However, there might be a baby boom, but this baby boom actually might be more related to improving in data collection. We'll come back to you later on. Now we still remain in Africa and we'll be discussing the situation in Benin. And we have as a speaker, Priska Omugeni. Priska, you have 10 minutes and the floor is yours. Jacques, please stop your sharing screen.
Sharing the screen, yes.
Yes, great. Priska, please. You know, I will encourage panelists to see some questions. There were some questions for all the panelists, including for, and one of them was specifically for Selon Penn. And I think one was for Everton. Yeah, we can see your slide, Priska. Go ahead.
As you said, Edouard, my name is Priska Omugeni-Maripas. I'm a data fellow from Benin County Office UNFP. I would like to share with you the impact of COVID productive health services in Benin. In Benin, the first case, the first case of coronavirus disease on, was confirmed on March 20, which have been in a persistent global health crisis. It interrupted their love and of birth, marriage and death as well. In Benin, there was no total lockdown. Yes, of a sanitary, sanitary cordon around the. It started from the March the 30th, 2020, which forecast on those 12 municipalities and it was extended.
Priska, your internet is not stable, so maybe you can switch off your camera so that we can see your screen and we can hear you well. Yeah, let's try. Thank you.
Okay, I was around the affected area. It is start from 2020 to April 12, 2020, which forecast on 12 municipalities, extended to 15 municipalities until April of 27, 2020. Sanitary cordon was extended to May 10, 2020, when it was recorded on the government protection measures against COVID have been put in place to reduce the the sanitary cordon were obliged to mandatory wear of masks, wash hand with and good were allowed to move freely within the orange sun. And the movement with the green was prohibited, vice versa, goods transported were allowed. Some of the major like wearing mask around borders to goods only, ETC were initiated at the National Aid. From 2007 to 2020, there was a distraction based on the role, based on the code of person and the family of 2004, where the Ministry of Interior provided the administrative and technical supervision of civil registration. The commune municipalities facilitated the registration and the recording of event and the Ministry of Health was in charge of health settings and declaration. Was in charge of initiating operational for data correction and annual vital statistics of the administrative division via a network of data transfer on papers. The new mechanism now on birth registration starts, started in 2020 with the operationalization of the new powerful platform for CRVS event recording and biometric enrollment and production of basic vital statistics data named RMPP, le registre national de personnes physiques. It is a minimal and biometric database of person is in Benin. The RMPP took in account the registration of births occurs in health, occurring in health centers, the registration of births occurring, the health centers and the declaration and registration of birth outside the legal period of 30 days. During the period of COVID, the National Assembly deliberated and adopted in its session session of December 2020, the role on special provision for desimplification and the materialized management of civil status registration. 19 are applied on health facility level without affecting the delivery of birth declaration and the registration services. The continuity of the activity on CRVS office during the pandemic have been observed across the country. Based on the data corrected from the DSHS about the family planning services deliveries, there is a significant increase, the number of new enrollment due to the increase of community mobilization and the distribution resumed after harmonized the health protection measures at the national level. We are NGOs and actors involved in the family planning has, have set advanced strategy to reach the population, subsidize them to benefit the services from. The access to the sexual reproductive health service during COVID-19 continued in the crisis, where there was a significant increase in distribution of condom to youth in April to May 2020 and 2021. The government here has set an extension and strengthening measures of the sexual and reproductive health of adolescent and youth in Benin during the year 2020 to ensure the continuity of sexual and reproductive health service among adolescent and youth and the right protection associated to them in the period of COVID. About gender-based violence in 2020, a major campaign on violence prevention and existing support mechanism are deployed in the country to the maximum people in the country, especially the victims, so that they may report each case on GBV occurring. To conclude, to continue to operate even in emergency, in emergency to ensure the coverage and completeness of birth registration by leaving no one behind. The access to the family planning facilities on time is very important, even in a period of crisis, to respond to the admitted need for family planning. And adolescent and youth have the right to be provided a continuity of sexual and reproductive health service even in emergent situation. The victims of gender-based violence must be considered even during the COVID pandemic and be mobilized to report in GBV case. He are refrained. Thank you very much for your kind attention. Over to you, Edouard.
It seems that there was a connection problem. Probably the internet was quite, quite bad. So we're putting here all the presentations, but at least we saw your slides and what were the findings. Before we go to Thomas Botka, just encourage all the panelists to look in the Q and A. We have one question addressed to, for Jacques. And then in the chat, we have some questions from Patrick to all panelists. And then we have another question for Mohamed. And the last one is related again to all panelists. Before we go to the questions, I will go to Thomas Botka, who is the lead demographer, a leader search in the of demography. So Thomas, you have the floor. We see now all the presentations from Latin America, Asia, Africa, and now we're in Europe. So how we see the impact of COVID on fertility trends worldwide, including on some continents? You have the floor.
Thank you very much. So if you were wondering, I'm the real Thomas Botka of those who are logging in.
You are the one.
And let me first really say that this was an impressive overview of the trend and impact of the coronavirus pandemic on birth trends and more than birth trends across different parts of the world. We didn't cover the highly developed countries, but if you are curious about the impact of COVID on European countries and selected other highly developed countries, I will be presenting this in the session 171 later today. So that would be too many presentations on the, on the topic. Let me first highlight some general and common findings and issues. And then I will say a few words about, maybe not each of the presenters, but some of the, some of the presentations. So first, we see a big picture of diversity. Maybe one surprise is that many of us expected early in the COVID pandemic that we will see a massive change in the number of births. Especially demographers who have experienced this analyzing the impact of economic crises and other shocks in the past, expected that highly developed countries, middle income countries will see a baby bust for a significant period of time. But you know, seeing, seeing the evidence today and also looking at the presentations, I would dare to say that given how coronavirus is impacting massively our everyday lives, its impact on the number of births and fertility rates is relatively small overall. We have seen a lot of short-term impacts. For instance, Walter has clearly shown that in Peru, the first wave of the pandemic has clearly led to a depression in the number of births. And we see the same picture in many European countries. We see the same picture in some other Latin American countries, in the US, in East Asia. But then, when the first wave is over, it seems that either most people somehow learn to live with the pandemic or are able to carry on with their lives in terms of realizing their reproductive plans. So we don't see a clear, long-lasting effect of the pandemic on birth trends in most of the countries we are, we are now analyzing and which have been discussed. However, there is a lot of diversity between countries. So our research also needs to look much more on explaining what happens, why countries differ. The case of Peru was really illuminating because, as Walter mentioned, Peru is one of the leading countries in the number of deaths. If not, I mean, leading according to the official statistics. I think life expectancy was down by 11 or 12 years, according also to Everton's and his colleagues' research in 2020. That's, that's a massive impact. So that's, that's really like a laboratory of looking. If, if there is a place where we should see an impact on births and on reproductive health, it should be Peru. And of course, there was some impact, but surprisingly, it didn't last very long, at least the negative impact of this didn't last very long. I was curious to see the evidence on the age effects and surprisingly, given how many people predicted that especially Sub-Saharan Africa will see a baby boom among young adults, among teenage girls, a lot of unplanned teenage pregnancies and child marriages and so on and so forth. I think the presentations we had on Sub-Saharan Africa were not really suggesting that there is a huge increase in the number of early teenage pregnancies. So that's also something I was quite surprised about and we may discuss a little bit more later on. Some of the presentations touch the issue of contraceptive provision, family planning provision. Of course, there were disruptions, especially during the first wave. But all in all, especially based on the evidence presented by Jacques for the Democratic Republic of Congo and some other African countries, surprisingly, little has changed in couples' contraceptive behavior, at least based on these several surveys. Everyone talked about data, so that's that's a mantra we need to repeat again and again. We need better data. Often, and I really praise all the presenters by being very careful about interpreting the available data. I think everyone was was very careful. Jacques was very careful in interpreting the data for Congo, but but all other speakers were very careful. Not interpreting literally the data we are getting, and there are many issues with birth registration, so we need to get more into the heart of this. And one final general thing I would like to emphasize is that obviously COVID sometimes brings a few good things and one one little good thing is that perhaps it serves as an accelerator of proper data collection in many countries. Bangladesh was mentioned by Salem Khan as a country which which really rolled out the vital registration system and the population registry. The same for Benin, mentioned by Priska, the proper electronic centralized registration system operated since two thousand twenty, maybe not fully one hundred percent reliable, but this is a trend we need in in many more countries and this is quite lovable. Let me now think if if I can say a few words about individual presentations. I think for Walter, it was very fascinating, but I would like to see a finer-grained picture, shorter timescale for more countries than Peru. Some assessment, for instance, whether the first wave was impacting more countries in what way and what happens then after the first wave. But otherwise, it was it was really fascinating to see to see also some more countries, but more insights about one country, Peru. Very, very well done. Everton, this was this was very interesting analysis of Brazilian cities. I missed a little bit one thing. Why? Why? Why in three cities we see a more impact, obviously, about of the of the COVID, more of the negative impact? Three other cities, not so much impact so far. Are there any data issues? And one question I have to you is about the age. So you mentioned that most of the impact happened at the age of thirty thirty four. But when I looked at your graph and I looked what happened before the pandemic, I think there was a bit more shift of trends towards younger age groups during the pandemic of of bigger impact on birth trends among women aged twenty twenty four, maybe also twenty five, twenty nine. So you can tell us later whether I'm reading this right or whether I'm wrong. I'm wrong about this. I think I'm already speaking a little bit too long, maybe one more general comment before I finish. We all know the data on the numbers of infections and death. I think we should really take them this this a pinch of salt because often all these registrations on the numbers of infections are completely based on where the coronavirus infections are being tested. If there are no tests, there are no infections reported. So I was thinking especially for the Democratic Republic of Congo, all these urban rural differences and regional differences in the number of infections could be probably driven by and large by testing availability than by real infections, but that's also an open question. So thank you very much and I look forward for some more discussion in the next seven minutes. Sorry.
Thank you, Asquela, Thomas. It was really great to hear you and see you again. We have some questions in the chat and then Q and A, so I will start with them before we conclude. The first one would be for Everton, I think, just a minute, just a minute to find it. And yes, if you have some data by birth order, Maria Eugenia was asking. Yeah, and then with for Mohammed, if you can look at the question also in the chat. So the question is regarding total separation during the pandemic. So what happened to migrants who had been working abroad? Did they come back to Bangladesh during the pandemic or stay in the countries they were working? So we'll start with Everton and then I'll go with Salam.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I think this is a very great question and very interesting question on and, you know, we do not really have data on that. But presumably, there there might have some implication that normally those who live in the outside the country, they do not frequently visit the home country. So pandemic was quite very quite small duration, especially for the lockdowns and before and after lockdowns, people actually visited their home country. So there is, I don't think the separation or anything happened during that period because it didn't really cause a big issue. That is what I can say because as because I don't have data on that particular issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Salam, and now revert to Everton. So Everton was asking if you have data on the birth order.
Yeah, a quick response. No, we don't. Birth order data come from census. The Brazilian census twenty two thousand twenty was postponed due to the pandemic. So we only have births and by the year, but not birth order.
Thank you, Everton. And then I have a question for for Patrick to all panelists, so I will ask any of you to respond. Any issues reflect delayed registration that may affect results presented based on the vital registration? So far, not really mentioned as potential concern issue. So any of you want to address this question?
Yeah, I have a question, maybe Peru or Brazil, I have seen the abortion rate is fourteen point three percent. And my and also I have seen the mortality, maternal mortality also decline. So my question is whether, because I because I know, because I'm not a doctor, but I did my public masters anyway, but it has an impact on maternal mortality, I mean, the abortion. So can you just explain a little bit whether that percentage, a huge percentage, had an any impact on maternal mortality over?
In the case of Peru, it didn't have actually that impact, I think, because it's data from the demographic survey. And the question is, have you ever had any abortion, miscarriage or stillbirth? Which i- it's for women of reproductive age, so for women in their forties, they must most probably have had that abortion or miscarriage five or ten years ago. Okay, unlike the the youth adolescent with, if they had an abortion, may have had one or two years ago. And but most important thing would be regarding the the figures of births to see the 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 number of births at home, which is about five percent in comparison to former year. The still attendant birth rate is about ninety five or so percent, very high. But what the most striking fact has been that nine months after the the weight, because we have two, only two weight, but very a tsunami once. There was nine months and it declined very slowly. And in in the two weights. So, and but and one of that is we have in our country is that every year the DSS is updated. So we have this information about the sex, recent sexual activity, the last four weeks. So that is also an interesting feature we found that last year.
Yeah, thank you, Walter. I think we still did not respond to the question raised by by Patrick. His question is
I I can answer that, at least for Brazil. Well, this is a good question. I also have discussions with Thomas before about it, late registration. This is an issue. This is why we also limited our analysis until March. Because we also repeated every time we went to the data sets for all the cities and we also repeated extract the data and see if there were many changes. And this is why we didn't went to, because we have data until July of August this year, preliminary data. But the most consolidated one is from, I guess, from the first three months, which we didn't see many changes when we did repeatedly many times. This is also a reason, Thomas, you asked why we used, we went to these cities. Because when we started a research, there were the only seats that had preliminary data available and there are they are huge capitals. So and we tried to represent different parts of the country. This is why we went to the cities. So I I think I can respond to both questions already. But if I can go further, we also do now with some other colleagues, research using time series, also with Maria Winkler, your friend from V I D. And we are looking at, now looking at different regions, not only concerning cities, but we are looking broader Brazil, macro regions and federal states. And to answer also your question about age group. And then we we have data from education and age group. So we break down the time series and we look at, and of course, age, it's very sensitive. So we average then and huge age groups from more than, so we have from fifteen to twenty nine and then thirty to forty four or something like that. And we also see the same picture. We are right that you say that twenty five, twenty nine age group has also an impact. We see also they are also responsible for big changing and variations in births. But the most, I I think the most visible one, it's it's around around the age of thirty afterwards. And we see when we look at the time series data as well, that's the same picture. So more or less the same. Answer to your question about abortus and was from Salem Khan, if I may. Well, the problem is data. We don't have actually data from abortus and it's it's still an illegal practice. So it's very tough to get data from that. But what we are looking at, and it's also something that I can relate it to Thomas's speech about contraception, is that there was an increase and there's another research that we are doing about preterm births. And during the pandemic, there is a huge increasing in in preterm births. And also a switch in 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 terms of contraception use. And there's another research that we're doing on this lines and it's very interesting. Of course, it's all preliminary. I cannot show you to you. I'll, this is. So if you relate preterm births with some kind of maternal problems, for sure, maternal mortality has increased. There are some issues. There are some researchers already going on trying to look at that. The problem also is the data quality, maternal data quality. It's it's very problematic in Brazil. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Say something about
Jacques, just a second, just a second. Yes, we have a question for you, if you saw it. So let me read a question for the ones that are watching also. What is the level of completeness of birth registration and is there a lag in time of the reporting of births in the birth registration system? So please.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think this question in the context of DRC, we cannot have answer with more accuracy because the the use of data from registration system is not common. We still need democratization of those data and the access to the public. I know that UNFPA did a lot of work on two thousand twenty to to improve vital registration system in for for school, yeah, for students. But we don't know yet the so the outcome of those information. So we need to explore. And another information is that lockdown in DRC was only in one municipality in Kinshasa, so in Gombe. In other area, there was not restriction. So we don't know whether this has affected also the way people can go to to report birth or other death and other things. But we are aware of the potential selection bias on the statistics because before knowing the accurate, reliable prevalence of COVID nineteen, we need to test. If you don't have test, you can't estimate. So we still have some data challenges. For birth and fertility, maybe the upcoming DHS, Demographic Health Survey may provide more evidence about fertility is coming next year.
Yeah, yeah, data. No, thank you very much, Jacques. I think data was one of the crosscutting issues mentioned in all presentations. And COVID is not over and we will definitely need to continue our research on seeing what is its impact on the fertility in different countries, on different continents. And now our session is over. Just a reminder, we had a special session dedicated to the impact of COVID nineteen on the fertility trends. We had five great speakers from all continents. So we had Walter Mendoza. We had Everton Lima, both of them from Latin America. So it was Peru and Brazil. We had then Salem Khan from Bangladesh. We had Jacques Eminah from DRC and Pishka from Benin. And we had, of course, Thomas from Austria or Czech Republic. Thank you very much to all. It was great to discuss today with you and looking forward to the next sessions. And thank you very much for your inputs and excellent discussion today. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Goodbye, everyone.
Thank you. Gracias.
Have a nice day.